Just so you know, that's it's your nature and it is an honest thing to do with how webinars.
Yeah, that's right. I know, I've heard the rumors.
So I wanted to make sure, I wanted us to honor you as a thing. But you know what, we're just gonna go on, uh, they should go recognize. So and thank you for being able to be here.
Sure.
That's a big deal.
So, um, you know, we'll have to remind you that maybe not tonight, but I don't want to scare Bob. How you doing?
Well, basically it's gonna be hot, so you'll need many jeans when I come back.
Just wanted to work.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we're on the trading places, trading house, that is not the other house.
I do charge. All right, deals off. Good, 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 good to see you.
You have, I have my license, you have, hey, you have my phone which has everything of the system. Then you have my three credit cards that I'm using for everything. See, I didn't have any financial problems. But anyway, my bank was available, my supply, my account was available, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I am, I am.
So anyway, so that's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna explain everything about that. And then you have for us a mail, and it's all going there. But it's very sweaty, because it's, that doesn't seem to be the right, it just seems to be, I mean, you're being on the wire.
Yeah.
And that's okay, you're welcome, you can put it up and down. You'll be fine, it's good, you're good. I guess it's just me, it's pretty rough, you can have to put it out and go then. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I got my good, seven, seven.
You left your charger there.
Because she puts up, you know, the signs, and you all, these are all people who didn't have it. Well, it's a nice, and it's very cool, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's that, every, right? Not why you're, how good is that sign? Yeah. It's okay, but yeah, have somebody come on through. Um, also, I'm, I'm, I'm.
How are you?
Good, it's crazy good, this is my last meeting, so, I'm transitioning, I'm transitioning back to Texas. So, yeah, I'll be moving back in two weeks.
Oh.
So, happening quicker, so, but yeah, so contacts you met with at the church, are you the same people?
Oh, okay.
We'll take care of things.
Good news?
Yeah, it is.
Hello.
Back to family.
Yeah.
So, uh, we did a feedback question.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. A good seat.
It's good working here.
Thank you.
Yes, 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 that's what you're hearing, thank you for listening, so, awesome, will you be able to get up here, um, during, after, during the actual meeting? Hi.
Hi, how are you?
How are you, happy birthday? Hi, how are you, can I have a little, you having a good time? Did you have some spoiled, you know, like, uh? Good, how are you, financial?
Hi, good evening, what's good?
What's going on?
Hi, I'm transitioning back to Texas.
Oh, no. Who's calling you, what's your house?
So, I'm back by family, uh, still be a bit of a thirty percent.
Wow, that's good for you. Do you have anybody that you know is gonna get over a difficult course?
No, they have people that will be on film, once in one, yeah, we have three or four guys, maybe kind of alongside, but it'll be lengthy.
Yes, when, when is the plan?
Uh, for me, uh, we'll blow out next to, uh, sixty.
Oh, so this is your last hurrah, yes, which is? No, because I don't, my name, yeah, Bouchon, okay, I'll do my best, okay.
Always more surprised when people get it right.
Yeah, for me too, yeah, 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 okay. All right, well, I wish you all the best, and you'll still be on social media and stuff like that. Your wife is on social media, okay, please let us know when you get there and you get set.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks for being here, everything going well? Can you be here? Hey, well, if you're, you got fun again, are you gonna go back? What, a month? What do you think?
Time being six thirty P M, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Just want to, uh, let everybody know, this might be my last meeting tonight, because, um, I met up with a person today and I bought a Lotto ticket, so. She said it was the winning one.
Wish you all the best.
It's a billion dollars.
Wish you the best.
So I won't be hanging out with you commoners anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I'm here tonight.
All right, comedian.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Potassie.
Here.
Councilmember Kettering.
Here.
And Mayor Barrios.
Here, please note, all five of us are present, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing by the, for the invocation provided by Pastor Corey, Corey.
Bouchon.
Bouchon of River Oak Grace Community Church.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as you said, tonight is my last meeting, and so I will be transitioning back to Texas, and it's been a blessing, a blessing and a pleasure to work with you, uh, city council members over the last ten years, and I say well done, thank you, and I'd love to close, open us in prayer tonight. Heavenly Father, we are grateful that we have opportunities to, Father, sit and talk about the future of what's taking place in our city, and Lord, I know that the weight of Father decisions that are made so often change outcomes, Father, they change the trajectory of a future, and so, Father, I'm just asking again, as I have so frequently, Lord, I just pray over wisdom, discernment, understanding, the Father, the things that are discussed by this panel, this team, this board, Lord, would they be not just simply in the best interest of today, but, Father, would they shape a future that, Lord, would be blessed? Father, would your favor rest on the life of this city, Father, on the life of these leaders, and Lord, as I have before, I pray over the marriages that are represented, that, Father, you would bless, you would move, you would speak, Father, guard their hearts, Father, guard their future and their children, Father, guard their homes, Lord, we're grateful that you've called them to do the work that they do, and so, Father, as they give of their time, they give of their attention, and, Lord, again, would it be centered on a heart that, Lord, again, is rooted in you? And so, Lord, I'm grateful for my time, I thank you for the blessing that has been poured out over the life of River Oak Grace, over the life of this city, and so, Lord, we say thank you, I give you all the glory, all the honor you so richly deserve, in your glorious, matchless name, I pray, amen.
Amen, thank you so much, and we wish you all the best, appreciate you.
Corey, before you sneak away, I just want to personally say thank you for the last ten years of getting a chance to watch you from the pew, watch you up at the pew, uh, you've pastored to me and my family, uh, you've pastored into my wife and I's marriage, you baptized my wife, you have done a lot for this community, um, and congratulations to you for answering the call to further God's kingdom. It's not easy to move from a place of comfort, and I commend you for all that you've done and you're going to do, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
I'm giving you a hug.
All right, so item five point one, tonight, we're gonna be recognizing Kim Witcom and Larry Metcalf for their honesty and integrity, so a few weeks ago, they were both at our Oakdale's Concert in the Park, Oakdale Chamber and Oakdale City's, uh, Concert in the Park, and, um, Larry went into the restroom, you guys can go ahead and come on up here, please, they went into the restroom and Larry happened to find, uh, a lady's phone, which had, I believe, credit cards and cash in it, and he comes out and has Kim go in there, and they grabbed it, and, um, anyway, so tonight is just recognizing you, thanking you very much, because we see all this bad stuff on social media, and you turn on the news, which I rarely do, and you see all this negative stuff, and I just want to personally, we want to thank you for being honest and doing that, I know how it can be to lose a phone and those type of items, it really truly ruins a person's world for quite a long time, so, um, thank you for going the extra mile, thank you for being honest, and did you have anything you would like to say, Kim, while we have you up there?
Well, thank you guys for, uh, acknowledging that, and we felt like it was no big deal, we just did what we thought everyone would do if we lost our phones, but thank you so much for recognizing us, and we enjoy Concert in the Park so much, so thank you for that as well.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
That's me.
Thank you. Come on in the middle. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See, I didn't get you too hard, did I? You good? You guys see there? Put your feet around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you guys. It's a really big deal, it's a really, really big deal. All right, guys, thank you very much, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, we got a lot of good stuff on the agenda, and we can talk about more stuff at public comment if you'd like, you're welcome to stay with us, if not, we'll see you later. All right, have a good time. All right, uh, now is the time for a public comment, anyone wishing to provide public comment on an item that is not on the agenda, come up to the mic, state your name, and you will have three minutes. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Uh, city council consent agenda, would a council member like to pull an item, talk about an item, discuss, hi, chief, how you doing? Uh, discuss an item? If not, this is an action item, and I do need a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
First and a second, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios.
Yes, this item passes five oh, thank you, Colleen. All right, public hearing, item ten point one.
Good evening, Mayor, welcome back.
Good evening, thank you.
City council members. Thank you for coming tonight, Christopher. Uh, before you, ten point one is introduction of an ordinance amending chapter seven of the Oakdale Municipal Code, adding section fourteen title electric vehicle charging station permitting streamlining to the Oakdale Municipal Code, adopting administrative procedures for permitting the electrical vehicle, electrical vehicle charging stations to comply with government code, section six five eight five zero point seven and point seven one. So the purpose of this, uh, we're gonna recommend the adoption of the ordinance establishing the streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations, it ensures compliance with A B twelve thirty six, which was mandated in two thousand fifteen, and A B nine seventy, which was mandated in twenty twenty one, uh, to provide a publicly posted checklist and, and clear administrative procedures, so a little background on A B twelve thirty six, it mandates that local jurisdictions adopt a streamlined permitting process, limited to health and safety review, electronic, and then it has to be, you have to, uh, provide the ability for electronic permit submission and permit timeline posted online, then nine seventy came along and established binding deadlines of five or twenty business days for small projects and ten or forty days, uh, business days for larger projects, and it requires that we, uh, make accommodations for electric vehicle charging stations. So the ordinance highlights, uh, online checklist for applicants, electronic permit submissions and signature, so they can submit and sign online, they don't have to come to the office to do it, or public services, streamlined ministerial review, limited to health and safety, um, just so that everybody understands what the ministerial part means, it basically means, uh, it's bound by law that we, um, allow it, as long as all the paperwork is completed correctly, there's no subjective, um, oversight on this. Automatic approval if deadlines are not met, so if staff isn't timely, then it's automatically approved. And it adjusts the parking requirements for the, uh, E V C S installations, uh, single consolidated deficiency notice required, in other words, no multiple rounds of comments, so when they submit it, we have to have everything that the application is deficient in, and return it to the customer out on one time, and then they have the chance to address what they're lacking. And then, of course, public posting of checklists and timelines on the city website, fiscal impact minimal, financial implications, it's primarily just updating our website and establishing a process. So we recommend adopting the ordinance, amending chapter seven of the Oakdale Municipal Code, adding chapter fourteen title E V, electric vehicle charging station permitting streamlining to the Oakdale Municipal Code, and adopting administrative procedures for permitting E V C S to comply with the government codes, and with that, I will answer any questions.
Do we have any, um, comments from the public for Jerry? Questions from the city council?
We got two questions here, number one, are we doing this because we have to do it, or because we just wanted to make more, something clearer?
So, back in two thousand fifteen and twenty twenty one, it was mandated by all, that all municipalities do it.
And we haven't caught up to that yet, so we're doing it now to catch up to that?
That's correct.
Okay, and this is basically for commercial parking lots with charging stations, it has, doesn't have to do with the guy living next door, he's charging his Tesla, right?
It does.
It does?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so if that guy wants to get a, a charging station put on the side of his house, he, he gets a permit from you guys, you streamline it, yes?
And we have to approve it within five days.
Okay, thanks.
I thought of this after you and I spoke and got busy, I couldn't call you again, but, so, somebody could go and buy surrounding property, basically wherever they want, and invest in charging station, and does the city have any say on layout, location, or, like, is there, is, is it out of the city's hands at that point, once they pull the permit, or is there still things that there's gonna be a criteria they have to meet, or limits, or constraints that?
So, my understanding is that we have to have the streamlined process, we have to accept the application, they have to be, they have to be able to sign it electronically, if somebody came in and wanted to build just an E V charging station center, it would have to m- match the zoning code of the city, like, you couldn't just pick a spot and say, instead of putting a house here, I want to put, I want to put a charging station for a bunch of electric vehicles, no, it still has to match what, uh, what that area is zoned for, in other words, you can't take, this would be kind of a retail, what you're explaining to me would be kind of retail, you can't take this retail sort of operation that you want to do and put it in the middle of a neighborhood, no. But if somebody in a house wants to put one, two, three charging stations in their house, they fill out the applications through our streamlined process, it gets approved.
Thank you. My only other question was, um, uh, it was five slash twenty, or one slash, what's?
So it was, uh, five days or twenty days, five days for, uh, residential.
Twenty for commercial.
And, uh, twenty for, uh, larger projects, and then ten days and forty days for commercial.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council? All right.
Uh, motion to approve ten dot one.
I second that motion.
First and a second, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie.
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios.
Yes, this item passes five oh, thank you, Colleen, all right, eleven point one, something that's been talked about for many, many moons, and I'm so happy that you brought it up, thank you, Jerry, appreciate that.
Many, many years, yes.
Many, many moons, yes.
So, I'll just start with the presentation, uh, before you tonight, eleven point one is consideration of a resolution accepting a new city of Oakdale speed hump policy to formalize the process of requesting and installing speed humps as traffic calming devices. And the reason this comes up, little background, is residents have consistently expressed concerns about speeding, unsafe driving behaviors, and how do we get people to slow down through our residential areas, they brought speed humps as a solution to us for numerous years, we did not have a policy for it, so now we're presenting a policy for city council to approve, if desired. Uh, repeated requests for traffic calming devices, specifically the speed humps, um, there, we, we lacked a structured policy, so it created a lot of ambiguity, um, and this updated policy provides what I feel is a fair, data-driven, transparent framework consistent with community request, in other words, it gives us a framework to decide where the speed humps will, will benefit the most, and if it's fiscally feasible. Policy highlights, it establishes eligibility requirements, it requi, it requires community engagement and a petition process from residents, it's a one hundred point evaluation scoring system, and the design standards align with M U S, M U T C D, and Caltrans, and the city of Oakdale, uh, there's a removal and an appeals provision and funding through city budget or resident contributions. Some of the highlights of the eligibility criteria, residential streets with twenty-five to thirty mile per hour limits, uh, daily traffic volume of less than thirty-five hundred vehicles, minimum length of seven hundred feet is required, no arterial streets, collector streets, or emergency routes, so emergency routes would be a route that police or fire would use to get to a location where, uh, time is of the essence, so we don't want the emergency vehicles to be slowed. And then it requires a traffic study where it shows eighty-fifth percentile speeds of seven mi, of greater or equal to seven miles per hour over the limit, or sixty percent of the vehicles are traveling at an unsafe speed, in others, in other words, a s- a speed over the limit posted. Residents, submit the speed hump request form, the petition requires seventy-five percent or greater support from adjacent households.
How do you, how do you describe adjacent in this?
So, an adjacent household, any, any residence that is on the street, or any residence that has a property line that borders the street, so if you're on a corner lot and you're on one of the streets, but your face, your, your house faces a different direction than the street would go, we would consider that adjacent, you would have to get.
But if the street's a mile long, and you live a mile down there, how far is this adjacency?
So it depends on what the application is, and it's speci, and you can specifically say, on a certain street, from this block to this block, and if you fall within that range, then you would have to have seventy-five percent of those residents agreeing to this.
Thank you.
One vote per household, and then it'll be verified by city staff before evaluation. Uh, the street scored on a one hundred point, uh, matrix with a minimum of eighty-five points required, uh, factors include traffic volume, speed, geometry, collisions, and emergency access, like we said before, it'll be reviewed by the traffic safety committee, and then, uh, council approval required for funding and installation, so anything that's decided by the traffic, traffic safety committee would be brought back to city council for city council approval, so this is just formalizing a process, and then anything going forward would come back to city council for approval. Design and installation speed humps are generally twelve to twenty-two feet long, three to four inches high, typical spacing between them is two hundred to six hundred feet, depending on where we could place them, because we won't place them in front of driveways, we won't place them in front of fire hydrants, uh, too close to intersections, that sort of stuff. Oh, and I just said that. Advanced warning signs and pavement markings are required, so anytime we put these up, there will be signs along the street saying, hey, the, the speed hump is coming up, you need to slow down, and then, of course, they have to meet the M U T C D, Caltrans, and R standards. There's a removal and appeals, uh, removal requires greater than seventy-five percent resident petition, if we install them and then the residents decide they don't like them, there's their, uh, minimum twelve months installation before removal, so they can get used to them, and maybe, maybe they change their mind and they, they realize that they are working for the community. And then, if they're removed, no reapplication for five years, because they can be quite expensive to install, and then to uninstall, um, there are appeals for ineligible streets, which will be reviewed by public works. Fiscal impact cost depends on the number of approved requests, funded by city budget or resident self-funding, um, sir, uh, reduced general fund burden when residents self-fund. So staff recommends approving the resolution accepting new city of Oakdale speed hump policy to formalize the process of requesting and installing speed humps as traffic calming devices, and with that, I'll take any questions.
So bottom line is, we're gonna put this new process into place, people can complete the form that we have, take it to their neighbors, get them to sign it, correct?
Yes.
Bring it back to the city, is there a fee that they have to pay to turn in this application?
No.
So no, no application fee, anybody within the community, the city limits can do this, I know there's an area close to my house that really wants this, I don't know if their neighbors feel the same, but they would do that exact process, bring it in here, it goes through city staff, maybe one council member, public works, all the different departments, and then, then it's approved, it brings back to council and say, okay, we have five different areas in town, here's, you know, the, after you do the studies and all that, and then we have to approve it, so it'll come from the general fund if we say yes, or maybe your. So it'll come from the general fund if we say yes, or maybe your area, whatever, says, hey, we're going to all pitch in five hundred bucks each, and we really want this. That's done, dead deal. If something happens that they decide, man, we've had this for three months, it's terrible, the noise is crazy, people are still driving wild, and they come back and they say they want us to remove it, they're out of the system now for five years, is that correct?
And they gotta wait twelve months before we pluck it out.
Okay, because I know there's some people, after posting this on social media, because I've had other people reach out to me, the neighbors, everybody thinks, everybody thinks the same, like I would think my neighbor would think the same, but it's not like that. So some neighbors want it in different areas, just like they want stop signs, and other neighbors are like, no, you don't want a stop sign here, or no, I don't. So this is pretty much in a nutshell, the process, what you just explained.
Well summarized, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any comments from the public? Comments, comments? You're welcome to come on up and please state your name.
My name is Jim Minkle, I have a question.
You come to the microphone?
I'm sorry?
Come to the microphone.
So right now is for public comment?
I can start with comments.
Yeah, right now's public comment.
And I encourage you, if you have questions, just call my office, come by and see me, I can answer your questions for you.
Okay, sounds good. My name's Jim Minkle, as I said, I appreciate you guys hearing me. I came tonight specifically for this reason. We moved to Oakdale a little over a year ago, and we, we really loved our time here since we've been here. I have two young kids, seven-year-old and a three-year-old. On top of those kids, my wife watches a one-year-old that's at my house a couple days a week. My neighbors have multiple kids that are at my house, and they play in my driveway all summer long, every weekend they're out there playing. A couple weeks ago, we had an accident on our street, a brand-new car that we just bought three weeks ago was smashed in my driveway by a drunk driver that was coming around to turn a little bit, a lot too fast, and he, unfortunately, the car's not totaled due to the value of it being new, but it was really, really serious. God forbid that it wasn't a child there or, or an adult there that was killed, because that's what would have happened. But again, that's why I'm here tonight. So just want to say thank you to all you guys for, for hearing me out, listening and bringing this to our attention. Again, I'm going to go through that process, I'll call you and get more information about how I can start the process and the other questions I had. But again, just kind of wanted to share the story, it's very, very important to myself and my other neighbors that have kids as well, so I appreciate you guys hearing me out.
And thank you for reaching out to me and for attending the meeting tonight.
Yeah, definitely.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Are you comfortable telling us what neighborhood you live in?
I live on River Bluff, right on the corner by the water tower right there, and they, they coincidentally put signs in today, I know we were talking about that, they did that today.
Thank you guys for doing that, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Mr. Minkle, could you please provide yours telephone number to Colleen?
Yeah, definitely.
So I can call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Sorry you went through that.
All right, anyone else for public comment? No one else for public comment? All right, public comments, no closed. Bring it back to council, council have any comments?
Is there, is there a timeline of like from application to install that we've, you've guys kind of brought up with, brought up to? Like are you guys kind of aiming for a certain amount of time before, you know, people aren't waiting six months to a year to get them installed, it's going to be kind of a, hey, we've got this much time to review it, bring it to council, and move forward with the install?
I, I think it's going to be dependent on the neighborhood and how the funding is, because right now this is just a policy for installing them. We have no funding source for doing this. Our general fund's about seventeen million, primarily for public safety, police, fire, and so we have very little discretionary fund there to, to pull any money out of general fund for this. So this is the first, first step. If, if communities or residents within a certain area can come up with a self-funding, I don't foresee it being, being a very long process whatsoever. I looked online today and we could actually have this stuff here, the, the product from certain companies that, that make this sort of stuff, we could probably have it here within a couple of weeks. And then it's just a matter of scheduling staff time, so it's, it depends on how quickly they can gather their, their petition with their signatures, submit it to us, we get it approved, goes to Traffic Safety Committee, the funding source getting it to us. So self-funding would go a whole lot quicker than the city funding it, I imagine, in a couple of months, as long, as long as we have the staff to install it. I would say a couple of months at the max.
I'd like to ha, I'd like to connect with the Oakdale leader, for you to have, to say something to the leader, and then also a social media post, because of obviously posting already about the agenda, and if you want me to contact the leader or you want to contact them, I think it'd be very important to have them, something coming from you.
I'll contact them, they'll probably contact me too.
And then social media, and then we can just share it on our pages. I think it's important to get out what it is, how it's going to work.
Okay.
That kind of stuff, thank you.
So there are permanent asphalt speed bumps and there are portable plastic, so we're discussing plastic ones tonight, right? That we can drill into the ground and remove at will? We're not talking about tearing streets up and repaving the hump into it, right?
Right, right, so there, there are several different types, and, and that goes back to kind of councilmember Potassie's question, it's like, what, what kind of speed hump are we actually going to build? If it's out of asphalt, it'll probably wait until this, the, the road is reconstructed and we use, we don't have to use general fund, in other words, if there's a developer that's coming in and we see fit to mandate the, the speed humps, then we could do that. And then if we have a street that's undergoing rehabilitation, like we have, we always have projects going, so if we saw an ability to kind of build that into it, we certainly would. Then there are ones that are made out of recycled tires, so they're actual rubber, they're quite heavy, quite robust, and you just anchor them into the, into the roadway and they, they don't, they don't move, they've been, they'll stay there for quite a while.
So I would gander to predict, if we put every resident of Oakdale in a room and asked them to raise their hand, who wants speed bumps? I'd say probably seventy, seventy-five percent would raise their hands. And we've had councilmembers sit up here and say, you know, I don't want a speed bump, it'll slow me down. And that's the whole point of a speed hump. So you either, you're either on this line where I'm rushing to get across town because I'm always running late, or you...
That's not a speed bump issue.
Right, that's not a speed bump issue, that's a bad driving issue, but I...
We're trying to solve bad driving issues by doing it.
I'm just thinking this is going to be an overwhelming thing, because everybody is going to want a speed bump, because everybody drives too fast in front of my house, but I don't drive too fast in front of their house. So prepare yourself, I'm all, I'm all for this, don't get me wrong, I am all for this, but I think you need to be prepared that you might be overwhelmed with requests.
Well, according to the social media post, there was a lot of engagement and people were going to come here to talk about this, so I'm just saying.
Well, now's your time to talk, everybody.
And there's, well, there's a lot, there's a lot of work that needs to be done for one to have this in their neighborhood, so they have to put the effort in, which is great, that's what we're doing. Hey, we understand there's, there's concerns and questions, here's what you're going to have to do, so those people, they're going to put a lot of work into it, it'd be nice, you know? If them and their neighbors want it, I think it's the way to go.
And you'll find out which ones of your neighbors are the speeders, because they won't sign the petition.
This is com, comments, public comment. Yeah, we can give you Jerry's number for tomorrow if you'd like to talk with him.
And I have, on this particular, I have greatly mixed feelings. I went through a neighborhood on Friday night after leaving the Oakdale High School football game in Stockton, which they dominated, anyway, and I turned the wrong way out of the parking lot and ended up going through a residential neighborhood that had these speed. I was calling them bumps until I was told that's the wrong word, speed humps. Made me slow down, there was nobody around, it was ten-thirty at night, great, great policy. I think the way this policy is written is top-notch. Here's my concern, is we are putting potential safety in the hands of people who can afford something versus people that can't. So if all the residents in Oakdale agreed to do this policy, and I'll be very personal, my street could probably afford speed bumps next week. But another area of town may meet the same criteria, because we don't have it in the general fund, they meet all the criteria, because they don't have the expendable funds, they potentially could have less safety in their neighborhood. And I don't believe government benefit should go to anybody solely based on their income. And so I, I struggle with that, it's an incredibly war-ridden policy, I see the benefits of it, but I also don't see somebody getting government benefits because their income is higher than others.
Can I make a comment on that? As much as I agree with that, and it's a good point, there's an eligibility requirement built into this. Speed study, traffic study is built into it.
That's what I said, if everything being equal, my neighborhood could afford it this week, other people, sorry, other peo, other people who meet the exact same criteria, and I'm assuming all criteria met. People who can't afford it could potentially be less safe, and Senior Mayor and I have talked about it, I've expressed my concerns. I just, I struggle with that, that people, and in the future, I think there's a possibility for general fund to cover this, maybe after mid-year budget, maybe next year's budget, but I think that it, again, I don't believe government should benefit people who have a larger wallet, and I will never support anything that government will support people with a larger wallet.
I'm a hundred percent with you on that.
Any other questions?
Do we have to include that they can fund the speed humps on their own?
No, but then if we do that, I can tell you, we're not, the city's not going to fund it at this point. We don't have the general fund that would cover what I'm requesting. So ba, basically, this is a start, I anticipate mid-year when we could do some budget adjustments, as long as things are going well, we could probably find some funds that could go and support this policy, or next year, but I understand what councilmember Kettering is saying, but by not doing this policy, we're, we're taking away a lot of opportunity to really adjust some of the traffic.
By not having the standard.
By, by not having the policy, and then because we don't have a funding source, I, I don't think that we should just kill it, because we, at this point, we don't have a funding source.
Have, has anybody put a price tag on one of these speed humps? And by the way, the difference between a speed bump and a speed hump is the first letter. Okay, do we have a price tag on one of these speed humps?
So...
Just ballpark, ten thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars?
I, I anticipated this, I wasn't sure if it would come up, so I put some additional slides in here, so here's River, River Bluff Drive, and here's an example, so thank you for being here. Here's an example of how the, the speed humps would, would lie in the street, this is on the west side, and then here's River Bluff from Valley View to Cloverland, and it's nineteen-seventy, so it's about basically two thousand feet, so we would need about four, four different speed humps to address this street, to get it to the level that we want it. So it would require eight sections, that's six hundred ninety-one dollars, two end caps at four hundred and three, signs of two hundred and forty-three, this does not include the posts that we would need to hang the signs, so we get a total of thirteen thirty-eight per section. River Bluff would require four, so fifty-three hundred for the entirety of River Bluff, estimated shipping of twelve sixty for a total of sixty-six hundred, to achieve what we want to achieve with, with just River Bluff alone.
That's a long section.
Yeah.
Well, at least I'm glad that they're here to discuss this and that if we put this policy in place, everybody in town knows, hey, here's what you got to do to start the process, maybe we'll get one, one person to do, maybe we'll get ten, who knows, you know?
Right.
This is definitely a great start, and I agree with you, I see your point, I didn't think of that before, but I see your point, but I, I do like this policy, and I do think it's something that we need to set up, so at least we have something moving forward.
We, we do.
And then give the people, give the people an opportunity to, you know, present it to us.
Yeah, let's listen to what they have to say, and, and then if there's a large demand for it, and there's money, then yeah, let's, let's get a, a budgeted line item, give, give us something to work with, and then we can go make some good transitions in the community.
Or grant opportunities that we don't know about yet.
Right, we haven't located any yet.
Yeah, regardless of, of budgeting opportunities we have right now, getting it started, and I know since I started city council, if I had a dollar for every time a parent came to me and said, I need speed bumps in my neighborhood, where do I go? Be pretty well off right now, and I have kids, live in a good neighborhood, but there are people that drive through there, and it's ridiculous, and I'll be the first one to admit, I'll scream and yell at them as they drive by, because my kids are out there and my neighbor's kids are out there, and this isn't something we should have to worry about, we shouldn't have to go buy cones and the turtles with the flags and do all these things just because people want to speed through a neighborhood. Go out on the highway, and we need to have this as an option, and we also need to continue the police presence. I've noticed a lot of people that I've given phone numbers to, to reach out to you guys, I've driven around and watched and seen you guys out there making a presence and writing tickets and doing what you guys need to do to help, so that, the speed bumps and your guys' presence, I think, is going to readjust people's thoughts on how early they leave their house, where they need to get somewhere.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jerry? Comments from council? I'll take it really quick, public comment has been closed on this. I'll take it really quick.
I'm just thinking, I live on...
Got to, got to get up to the mic, please. Thanks, Gary. I live on River Bluff, we have approximately fifty homes on River Bluff, forty-five to fifty homes. If you take this cost, it's about a hundred and forty dollars a home, and that's a minimum amount for safety. And I know the police department doesn't have the personnel to sit on River Bluff all day long and write tickets, so whatever safety is provided for River Bluff, that frees them up to be in another neighborhood that needs some attention.
Thank you.
So that's just my comment.
Thank you for doing the math on that, since you live in that area.
Well, we'll see.
We're kind of neighbors in that area, right? Thank you, Gary. All right, so bring it back to council, this is an action item.
I think this is a good action item, I, motion to approve eleven dot one tonight.
I second that motion.
First and a second, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Berry?
Yes, this item passes five oh, thank you, Colleen, and thank you guys for being here tonight to learn about this, and you guys know how to reach out to us, you have my cell, and then you know how to reach out to Jerry, so thank you. All right, anything from city manager for today?
No.
Anything from council for today?
Just want to remind everybody that the third Tuesday of every month, Garden Club meets, and our president of the Garden Club's sitting right there, so come to the show, we, we added a bunch of members last meeting, and the next meeting should be just as fun. And by the way, there's Garden Club Tour coming up, tickets are available, see that man, or, or me, or whomever.
October fourth is Garden Club Tour. Also, Garden, October fourth, right?
Right.
And then also the Once Upon a Tomb at the, yeah, it's different, it's at the cemetery, and then they have the autumn gathering that day, yeah, October fourth's a busy day. Anything else?
Just real quick, for those that, you know, want some excitement on a Friday night, I know we have Concert in the Park, but I'm going to go a different direction, Oakdale plays Escalon in football Friday night, big neighborhood rivalry. It's also all of our mini Mustang cheerleaders, so all of the young ladies who strive to be cheerleaders at the high school level will be out there from ages, I think, six to thirteen, if you plan on going, it is going to be packed. My guess this will be the largest crowd we see at an Oakdale football game this season. So arrive early, JV starts, JV starts at five, Varsity starts at seven, so I hope to see you guys there.
And there is no concert at the park on Friday anymore?
Concert in the park ended on the twenty-ninth, but thank you for giving that shout-out, that was great. I will piggyback on that, Friday night, Escalon versus Oakdale, Cougars versus a Mustang, we will have the Mayor's Cup again, Oakdale did win last year, I'm praying and hoping for another win, so see us out there Friday night. We also have the Oakdale Chamber twelfth annual golf tournament Monday, the eighth, where we're honoring veterans, emergency responders, first responders, and active military. Oakdale Soccer Club is having their opening day this Saturday at TL Davis, so come on out and support our kids and our families and Oakdale Soccer Club. Morning Market ends at the end of September, what's the last day, September twenty-seven, twenty-eight, something? Anyway, so you have four more Saturdays to go to our awesome Morning Market. And with that, thank you for joining us here this evening, next meeting Monday, September fifteenth, six-thirty PM, right here, happy early birthday, meeting adjourned.